I'd like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council of Order, show that all council members are present. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Clark to lead us to the invocation, followed by the pledge. Councilman Judd, if you'd all like to join us, you may stand and do so.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this day, thankful for the opportunity we have together as a city council. We're able to talk about the business before us and the needs and the situations facing our citizens. We pray that Thy Spirit will be with us this night, help guide and direct us, help our thoughts and actions to be in harmony with Thee and with, in a manner that is pleasing unto Thee and pleasing to the citizens of Sholo. We pray that as we deliberate and we discuss these items, that Thou will give us wisdom beyond our own, that we might be able to look at these matters as they affect the city of Sholo today as well as in the future. We ask a special blessing tonight to be upon the firefighters in the wildland crews who are battling the blazes locally and within our state. We pray that Thou will bless us with moisture, that we might be able to come out of these states, these fire restrictions, and that we might be able to receive the moisture that our lands so desperately need. Please protect and watch over our first responders and keep them safe. We humbly ask for these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Clark, Councilman Judd, I appreciate it. Thank you all for attending tonight. We'd like it when we give some special recognition to our, to our Sholo Cougars, for sure. Next item on the agenda is called the Republic. Any citizens desire to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city, if council may do so at this time? Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. It shall be addressed in the city council hall. Mrs. Hefner, or Ally, or Allison, or all of them.
My name is Allison Hefner. I live at 7142 White Gateway in Sholo, two words, just in case. I am here today, mayor, vice mayor, council members and staff, to talk about the community, the Turn of the Card Community Center and the Meals on Wheels program. I was fortunate and truly blessed to be a part of it from 2020 to 2023. And during that time, I saw it go from two individuals eating in the restaurant all the time to many and social connection. I went and delivered food and found that our seniors in this community, a lot of them struggle and a lot of them are home alone. And I've worked with a lot of people with Meals on Wheels to try to get it to a place where it can thrive. And we're, I'm no longer with them, so I have no vested interest. I just wanted to say, we finished our contract. It was very successful. However, there are some things that I would like to share with you guys. I know that you are all up there because you care about the community and you're extremely passionate about the community because, believe you me, running is not the easiest thing in the world to do. So you put your things aside and you run because you want this community to thrive. You want the people in it to thrive. So I do commend you and I thank you. We need more people like this in our community. And I think that if you know the information I'm going to tell you, then maybe we can try to figure out how to help Meals on Wheels in the Turn of the Card Community Center. Currently, the funding that they're receiving is not enough from the contract that they have with the city. It's not enough to sustain the operations. In fact, the Meals on Wheels, part of the funding that they get is subsidizing the center operations, which means that money that's meant to feed these seniors is being utilized to subsidize the Turn of the Card Community Center. It's been, there is some fantastic, there's a lot of fantastics and the partnership with the city is great. I just don't know if you guys knew that this was happening or this was getting, this information was getting to you. With that, the, the relationship with the city is fantastic. It's never ever been an issue. It's, the past years have caused a little bit more strain than normal. Our minimum wage increase, the cut went significantly, I mean, it doubled. What does a nonprofit do with that? Well, you start pulling money from other areas. I know this is not intentional. You also have the fact that food went up because of minimum wage increase. Gas prices went up. A lot of the people, it's a very small crew. They do a lot with a little bit. They're, they're always trying to find ways to make more money, bring more money, raise more money. Now, the state has a little bit of a money issue and so they're pulling some of the funding for Meals on Wheels. So it's even, even going to be less funding coming in. I don't know how much longer they can sustain in the, in where they are. They're trying, they're, they're focused on it. I kind of watch from outside and anytime they need any resources or anything, I'm like, here, here, take what you need. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that and maybe there could be some kind of a committee in the future with certain board members and certain staff and leadership at Meals on Wheels to make sure that it is sustainable. Sholo, 15% of our seniors, we have 15% of our population as seniors. 9% of those live alone. And if you've ever delivered food for Sholo, for Meals on Wheels, you know how dire this program is and what our seniors really need. The Turn of the Card Community Center has created incredible, they have food boxes for seniors that they even deliver to seniors. They have a program where they're feeding seniors in, in there. The people come every day, Congress get feeding and they, they connect. And it's just the most beautiful thing to see. The senior center, just so you know, the Turn of the Card Community Center is popping. It is busy. So when you look at maybe, I would say it's as busy as the library. And I would encourage you to go down and see how many people in the community it's truly serving. So then maybe there is a way to help support them a little bit more so that we can continue to serve our seniors throughout the Sholo area. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you and truly, really appreciate the work that everybody does up here because it's not easy. And I just want you guys to know that, so.
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I've been involved with the senior center through NACOG first and, and through the city of Sholo, but I have delivered some of the meals and not so much on the hungry side as the companion side. You said how many, 19, 9% or how many said are living alone. It's pretty sad when they can't wait to get their meal, but just to talk to you. It blew me, blew my mind. So it is, it's very important. I know the meals are important, but the companionship is, once you get there and you're in a hurry because you've got others and you have a certain time, you have to deliver these, and they want to keep you there all day just to talk. So it's, it is pretty sad everywhere. It's, it's very sad. Thank you again, Ally. Appreciate all the work you do for the senior center. Vice Mayor.
I too would like to make a comment on that. Ally, thank you for all your work there. There's a really great article in the newspaper today regarding the center and how you can get involved and help. So I encourage all of you to read that article and do what you can to get involved. This program, it's a really great program.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Alrighty, next item on our agenda is crosswind runway. Wait, I'm sorry, I gotta do this one first just because they're all here for that. I was gonna let them wait. We're gonna put that at the bottom. You kids don't mind sticking around till the end of the meeting, do you? Usually about an hour and a half to two hours, we'll put you at the end. No, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda is recognition of Sholo High School Division, five track state champions and Sholo High School record breakers. I can tell you, there's a few of us that graduated from Sholo High, probably way before you, any of you were born, but it's pretty awesome that we get to recognize our kids from the high school. And as long as I've been up here, I don't remember the last time we got to recognize a track team. So I think it's pretty awesome. I know I was track, Vice Mayor was track, John was track, so we have plenty of people up here. Believe it or not, I had the pole vault record at Sholo High School for many years. You would look at me and said, there's no way there's a pole big enough. But I did graduate at about 165 pounds, but I did have it up there for, for many years. So I, my heart has always, always been track and, and we appreciate that. The Vice Mayor's gonna read this because I have a little bit of a vision problem with one eye. So it takes me a little longer to read and you would be in the second hour by the time I finished reading this. We thought we'd let her read it, but thank you, guys.
So we had two divisions, six state champions in track this year and multiple school records were broken. First, we had senior, senior Mariah McNeil winning the 100 meter championship with the school record of 12.37 seconds. Mariah was also the anchor on the four by 100 meter team that broke the school record and took third at state. Our other champion was Junior Bryce, was a Junior Bryce Adams in the 300 meter hurdles. That record was actually set back in 1984 by my brother Darren Owens. So it's really neat that you broke that record.
Wow, that was a long time ago.
Bryce broke the school record in one state with an impressive time of 39.48 seconds. With that time, Bryce qualified for the champions, of champion state meet that was held on May 11th, and he competed against some of the nation's best hurdlers. Bryce was also a part of the boys four by 100 meter team that also took third in state and broke the school's previous record. Our boys four by 400 meter team that Bryce was also on took third at state as well. Overall this year, eight school records were broken and we had 34 athletes qualify for, qualify for the state divisional meet. Mariah's future is bright in whatever she decides to do and Bryce will get, we will get to continue to watch as he improves upon his success and he will be a senior next year. Some of the school records that were broken, the girls four by 100 meter relay, third place at state and the school record of 50.09 seconds. The team was Jaylee Boys, Taylin Butler, I hope I said that right. Taylin Butler, Haley Webb, Mariah McNeil. Taylin is a freshman, Haley and Jaylee are sophomores and Mariah, a senior. The boys four by 100 meter relay took fourth at state with the school record of 43.50 seconds. The team was Bryce Adams, Jacob Altop, Ethan Beeler, Jaden Wade. Bryce, Jaden and Ethan are juniors and Jacob is a senior this year, or was. Junior Ethan Beeler ran the 110 meter hurdles. He took fourth at state and the school record he beat with a time of 15.31 seconds. The four by 400 meter boys relay, third at state and they, their time was three minutes 25 seconds, 25.24 seconds. The team was Bryce Adams, Jaden Wade, Dalen Adams and Jacob Altop. Other school records that were broken this year were the boys and girls javelin throws. Sophomore Luke Taylor and sophomore Sarah Gibbons now hold those records. Dalen Rawlings broke the school record, sophomore record for pole vault, clearing 12 feet 6 inches. So congratulations on your success and your efforts. We, we admire you and we wish you continued success.
I didn't even know they had javelin in high school, so that's kind of a new one. So I only get this opportunity every now and then, but if I can have the coaches come up and say a few words about their team, I'd appreciate it. And then we have a few gifts that we'd like to hand out to who's here and then we'll give them all to the, whoever's not here will give them to the coaches and come up for pitchers or whatever you'd like to do. But I always like to get Coach Boyce up here to say a few words and kind of embarrass him a little bit. Wait, you forgot somebody.
Yeah, I told her.
She doesn't have a choice. You have to come up here with him. I'm sorry. That's kind of the whole reason I wanted him up here, because I knew how you hated to come up here.
How's it going? I'm Coach Boyce. This is my second year as the head track coach, but anybody that is in track or their parents know, it's kind of the head coach here. Her program, I just do what she tells me to, so I'm the rah rah guy at the meets, but it's working, so we're gonna keep, keep going this way. Yeah, the reason I put some of those ages on there is we have a lot of kids that are coming back. We had a really good shot at state, boys and girls this year, so there's no reason we're not up there next year. We've got a lot of young people. The freshman group was insane this year too, so I mean, it's definitely on the up and up for Sholo right now for track.
I agree.
Sorry.
We're really proud of them.
Anyway, thank you guys very much. And we do have a few gifts we'd like to get and whoever's not here, we'll let you take with you, but we have a few gifts we'd like to give to them. Well, I thought you had to do everything. I definitely can't read that print.
This is for Mariah McNeil. So they're getting a water bottle and a sweatshirt.
Thank you.
Bryce Adams.
You get to stay up here. Sorry. If somebody wanted a pitcher, congratulations.
Jaden Wade. Jacob Altop. Ethan Beeler. Luke Taylor.
He's a family friend. He would have taken state except for he was performing in the, the family opera, so he had to miss state because of the performance.
Well, we appreciate your talent. Dalen Adams. Congratulations. Dalen Rawlings. Sarah Gibbons. Haley Webb. Jaylee Boys. Taylin Butler.
Your daughter or other one runs Track Engine?
Yes, we're on four by one.
We don't have a shirt. Who made that list of? You want to come up here anyway? We'll get you a shirt. Isn't she part of the track team? Get up here.
Come on up.
Well, he can come up too.
Alright, if you guys want to come in, kind of move in the front of the council, we'll scoot in too and you can get a picture here.
Did we forget anybody else out there that's part of the track team?
Lincoln, right there.
Come up here.
You get the list of.
Good, boys. I don't smell the day.
List of the people that we get in there.
I showered yesterday.
How come you guys can't squeeze in together? Come on, Coach.
Yeah, tighten it up, boys. Act like you like it.
Thank you. Congratulations again. We'll see you guys next year.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Really excited for you.
And we'll get some more coming through. Make sure we get the list of the kids on the rest of things so we can get them started. Huh?
I'll tell you afterwards.
Oh, I see what it was. Okay, that's alright. We'll get pictures for it. We'll see them next year. Okay, next item on the agenda is crosswind runway focus planning presentation. Mr. Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this, this evening to print it, to introduce our airport consultants with Dibble and Armstrong that helped us to complete the study on the focused runway planning. And that final draft will be presented to you tonight and then we'll be forwarded on to FAA for review and they're gonna take it away with a short presentation and then they'll be available for any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Charlie McDermott with Dibble Engineering. I'm the aviation planning manager. We're very excited this evening to present to you the findings of the focus planning study for the proposed crosswind runway at Sholo Airport. We have a brief presentation Jenny Watts is gonna provide to you. She's our aviation senior planner for the firm. We just came from our second public meeting this afternoon. We had a very good turnout, got a lot of good feedback. So we're excited about the project and helping you move it, move it forward. So thank you.
Don't be afraid of the.
I was waiting for the presentation. Is it, is it up or, oh, I thought it. I'm sorry?
Just a second.
Okay. Good evening. It wasn't? Okay, and then to advance it, just, uh, stuff going on. Sorry, I'm driving. Okay, gotcha. Good evening. So myself and my colleagues, so Charlie and then Jason from Armstrong Consultants, we were here back in September of last year essentially to introduce the focus planning study for the new proposed crosswind runway at Sholo Regional Airport. Back in September, we met with, did a briefing with the Aviation Advisory Council and then we came from one of our first open houses, public open houses that day just to give a background on the study, why, why it was being done and to kind of provide the goals and objectives of that. I know that a lot of you from the council went to that first open house, so hopefully you had a pretty good overview of what the focus planning study is and why we're doing it. So I didn't want to recap a lot of that, but just to give a brief overview. So yes, the focus of this study in particular was for the proposed new crosswind runway at Sholo Regional Airport, which has been a focus of the airport for over 10 years now. And again, the main objective of the study was to basically provide the justification needed to construct their new runway and determine the preferred layout for, for the federal aviation administration. Essentially, scroll, there we go. So our focus planning study really had kind of five key components. The first one was to, like I said, establish the purpose and need as to why it was needed. Then essentially what we did was we looked at the, to validate the runway length, the orientation and the location as it was depicted on the 2021 approved airport layout plan. To validate the runway length, the orientation, and the location as it was depicted on the 2021 approved airport layout plan. The airport layout plan is part of the master plan process that was completed for Sholo back in 2021. And one of the outcomes of that is the airport layout plan, which is a planning and funding tool for the FAA. Which this new proposed crosswind runway was shown on the ALP and it was approved by the FAA. So essentially this study was just to validate the, the length, the orientation, and the location on, on the ALP. Once we did our own separate analysis and kind of dove a little bit deeper, um, you know, we, we did determine that the, the length and orientation were valid. So from there, we really used that layout as a basis for this study. And what we did was then take that basis and layout as on the ALP and um, essentially came up with some variations. So we developed several different alternatives, and then we had an evaluation process where at the end, we identified a preferred alternative. Once we identified that preferred alternative, there were several other related actions that we looked at. Notably being some of the environmental resource categories, so whether or not the preferred alternative was going to be affected. Affect any of these resources or not affect them. There was a, an airspace analysis to look at how the new, the preferred alternative would affect the airspace and surrounding traffic patterns and such in, from the existing way it is now to the proposed. And then there was also some preliminary engineering design, uh, which is what Armstrong did, and I'll let Jason speak to that in just a moment. And then, of course, there were some recommendations and next steps. And finally, the, the major part of it was also the public outreach. So um, as Charlie mentioned, uh, back in September, we, we did a briefing to the Aviation Advisory Council introducing the project. And then that same day, we also did one of the first public open houses. We are coming from today, earlier today, we did our second public um, information meeting, which I know some of you attended as well. And then we've also had news of the project has been um, shared on the city's website, the airport's website. So there was various different, you know, outreach we've done, and that was basically just to make the public aware of this project. Um, you know, we're in the early planning stages, and you know, the next step is to move on to the environmental with the ultimate goal of it finally being constructed. So getting the awareness of this project out to the community early is, is important. So it was a big part of the study.
Can I ask you, what, did you, what did the public have to say?
You know, honestly, between the two public meetings, um, and then uh, the Aviation Advisory Council and stuff, we've, I've, we've heard overwhelmingly um, positive support for, for this, and I'm, I'm sure if you spoke to Jake, you know, he would have the same thing to say. You know, I don't, I don't, the history myself with the airport doesn't go back as far, but we know that this has been a project on the last master plan and the ALP, but the one previous to that. So it's something that the, the aviation community here in Sholo has been wanting for a long time. And some of the justification for that, um, we'll probably get into a little bit with, with Jason's presentation on the engineering side of it. So.
Thank you.
Right, so the main topic that I'm here to kind of go over today is essentially our evaluation of the alternatives and how we determine the preferred alternative. From the refinement that we took from the ALP layout, we essentially kind of, uh, there was five initial alternatives. Two of those alternatives, we kind of uh, eliminated from further evaluation. One of those alternatives, um, from a cost perspective, would have cost the least amount because, but it was also because the runway length was the shortest. We eliminated it just because we felt that the um, the benefit of the cost didn't necessarily outweigh the length of the runway still didn't provide enough length. The second one that we all, we eliminated essentially was um, we had the most optimal alignment for the wind and the length. However, that brought parts of the project off of the existing airport boundary, uh, which would have required more land acquisition. And so from a cost perspective, that was not probably feasible. So those two were eliminated, and then essentially we, we brought for three further ones, which I'll speak about in a minute. Essentially, we created evaluation criteria. So there was four main categories that, of the evaluation criteria. Those included financial feasibility, so essentially overall cost, and also funding availability. Operational performance, that included things such as how well each alternative ultimately worked with the existing airfield configuration in the most safe and efficient manner. Environmental implicat- implications were essentially looking at each of those resource categories required under the National Environmental Protection Act under NIPA. And just how each of those alternatives would be affected, or if any of those alternatives would affect any of those resources. And then we had a category essentially just other considerations, and that included site compatibility with engineering design, which is essentially how each of those alternatives ultimately worked with not only the design standards, but then the geography of the site itself. So that mostly had to do with the amount of fill and borrow material that was needed. And then conforma- conformity to the goals outlined in the master plan. So we wanted to make sure that each of the alternatives was, was meeting the goals that was set forth in the master plan and on the ALP. So those were essentially the criteria. So of the three alternatives that we carried forward, one of them included a no action. So essentially that would mean that the airport remains in its current configuration today. The existing crosswind runway, runway 422 would remain as is, and there would be no change. There's, and then there's, you know, numerous reasons why that was probably not the most viable. The second alternative that we brought forward was what we were calling a refined ALP layout. Essentially, it was the same uh, layout as depicted on the approved ALP. The only difference was is we slightly shifted it about 58 feet to the south. The reasoning behind that was just to uh, try and lessen the amount of fill material that would be needed on the north end, but also keeping all of the safety areas contained on airport property. So that was the main difference. And then finally, the last one that we looked at was what we called the adjusted alignment and an alternate taxiway layout. This one essentially, uh, we slightly rotated the alignment of the runway to get the most optimal runway, runway wind coverage that we could while maintaining inside airport bounds. So we got a little bit better uh, when runway wind coverage with that. And then essentially, we also contained the uh, RPZ on airport property, the runway protection zone on the south. And then finally, instead of doing a traditional parallel taxiway layout, which is what was offered in alternative number two, this alternative had a little bit of an alternate taxiway layout, and I'm gonna show the graphic in just a moment. But um, this was just a kind of an outside the box thinking, but essentially it was, it was to improve efficiency for taxiing aircraft. Those three alternatives were then, we did a qualitative and quantitative analysis. Essentially, we did some comparative analysis using those criteria that I mentioned. And then we assigned a reading scale. And essentially, after doing the comparative analysis, um, alternative four, which is the adjusted alignment and the alternate taxiway layout was, scored the highest. And so we brought that forward as our preferred alternative. And if you attended the open house tonight, you saw some of the, the graphics and boards that we put up for that. This is essentially the outcome of what we're recommending as the preferred alternative. This will move forward um, to the FAA, um, essentially, and that would lead to the next step, um, given their concurrence with the environmental. So again, you'll see here from the graphic, it's, this is going to provide the required wind coverage for the smaller single-engine aircraft, which is what 422, the current runway, was lacking. We've fit all of the safety areas, uh, at least on the south side, contained that runway protection zone within airport property. Um, and then we've come up with the alternative taxiway layout, which I'm actually going to now hand it over to Jason, and he's gonna talk a little bit more of the engineering side of it.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as we mentioned, uh, back in September uh, last year, uh, been a long time coming for this project. You know, we've, it's coming on 20 years now. And it is a big cost. Uh, what we found out, part of the, part of the engineering analysis is to determine cost. The goal of the engineering uh, was a fourfold. Identify the challenges, mitigate challenges. Identify the costs, reduce the cost. Define the preferred alternative, and then put together a little package for that preferred alternative. And, and come up with a phasing plan, because we're not gonna get $10.3 million in one slug from the FAA. So, uh, with that, uh, the challenges, the challenges primarily was the fill. So what could we do to minimize the fill by, uh, you've got about 40 feet of fill on that north end. 40 feet of elevation change between the bottom part of your property and where the runway would be. So how do we do that? We were able to minimize that to roughly about 22 to 25 feet using it, using the FAA design standards. The second, of course, is rock. It's all rock out there. And we're gonna have to deal with that during the design, and of course during the construction. Can't really mitigate it, it's there. So uh, we'll deal with that during the design and construction. Jenny mentioned rotation. By, by rotating the runway just a hair, just a hair, we kind of hug that hillside a little bit more as you lift you. If you do look at map, there's a plateau that extends up to the north. We can hug that a little bit, we can minimize some fill. So that's part of the rotation in, and it also helped with wind, which is a good thing. So, uh, the rotation also helped. The, the uh, the bullet point you see there, number one, um, identifies that increases wind coverage, also reduces cost a fair amount because it reduces fill. Uh, the taxiway alignment uh, was actually significant as well. It is a non-standard. You don't usually see it. Usually, uh, you see a parallel, nice parallel taxiway, so it asks, it begs the question, why? You know, it begs that question. And so the reason is, um, it's cheaper. It's cheaper to do it. You don't have to do all the fill and the cut associated between the runway and the taxiway. Lot of fill between the two, so it reduces fill. Fill's an issue because you're gonna have to find the fill to do that. And uh, it, it creates almost a straight out for your local folks, your local folks that are gonna be using that runway. They're just gonna come out of their uh, the GA facility on the south end of the airport, and they're gonna go right up A4 and just keep right on going to their, into their runway and take off. So uh, it works very nicely with the layout. The cost, and the minimization of that cost. So 10.3 is what we're at right now. And that's with the minimizing the fill, that's with the taxiway alignment. As I mentioned before, 10.3 million is gonna be tough to get from the FAA. So it does need to be cut down into pieces, into chunks, projects that are usable, not usable, but manageable projects within what is anticipated for what is a typical FAA project, roughly $3 million. Would be a not huge FAA project. So part of the, the goal for the preliminary engineering of this project was to come up with a plan. How can we minimize uh, impact? How can we fit the cost within a manageable amount? And still get something at the end of the day? So, just take a look at that. Like I mentioned before, so we're looking at about $3 million-ish in, in budget. That does not mean three years. It would be nice if it's three years. If the FAA can come up with three, three plus million dollars every year for the following three years, that would be great. So I, we don't want to say that it's three years. It is a period of time. Maybe three grants, maybe it's less. Maybe it's more, but the plan as it is right now is taxiway, runway for grading, grading first, grading being the fill. We talked about that, all that fill dirt that's needed on the north end. It's gonna be a huge dollar value. So the filler is first, getting the grading done for the runway, getting all the dirt work done. Starts with the taxiway. They, in order to do the minimization through the grading, to minimize the amount of dirt work that we have out there, the FAA says you have to have a parallel taxiway. You don't have a parallel taxiway if you build the runway first, because there's no taxiway. So you start with the taxiway. You do the taxiway, you do the grading for the runway, you come back and do the paving for the taxiway, you do the paving for the runway. If at any point they have more money than what is planned, you, you do both at the same time, taxiway. So um, the project identifies a report, or has a report that goes into more detail about the construction phasing, how much each phase costs, and, and the combination of phasing are all possible, and it's all dependent upon the FAA, how much money they have in any given year. So um. The package that you will see in the report, so we talked about the preferred alternative. Preferred alternative package that you will see will have a layout, a nice plan set for the grading. What's it gonna look like when it's done? It's gonna have a marking plan. You'll see all the stripes and all the pretty colors out there on the pavement. Lighting, we're gonna have, we're gonna show all the lighting for the edge of the runway, so the pilots can see at night. Uh, right now, the crosswind runway doesn't have that. But it certainly is eligible for the FAA to pay for that. So that's in the package. We're showing that, we have a cost for that. All the signage, all of the, the drainage, the culverts and things like that are also identified. So you'll see all that in the package as well as a nice narrative to go along with the planning narrative as well. And that, questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments?
So when that project's done, is, well, I know it's a crosswind runway, but will that be used more than the other ones? Because?
Great question. So as part of the, the project, um, you only need one crosswind runway. Right now, you already have a crosswind runway. The crosswind runway that you have does not meet criteria for wind coverage in combination with the run, the primary runway that you have. So that was one of the first criterias that the FAA needed to see in order to have it. Once the new runway is built, the old runway will start either being demoed or it will become a parallel taxiway for development purposes. That's something that still needs to be worked out in time, whether that's completely demoed or made into a parallel taxiway. Both options are identified on the ALP, so it certainly can be done either way. But uh, once the new runway is, is completed, the old one will be phased out. The old crosswind will be phased out.
Any other questions, comments? Wow, look how easy. Were you guys, was that the end?
That's it.
Oh, okay, just wanted to make sure. You know, I, I went to that today. Sorry, I briefly walked in there, but um, as in a, not an experienced pilot, but an experienced young man back in my days flying with my dad, it seems like every time we came into the runways, we were flying in sideways, so. Something that's well-needed for many, many years. I, I know there's a few more around the state. I think Springville probably needs this one. There's, there's other around the state. I do know back in the day, my, my stepmom was doing her pilot license, and she landed, and I think she hit the wing. So she didn't have a very good experience with, with our runway, so it's pretty exciting. It's real exciting to have this, and does that mean bigger planes, or does, is it longer? It's kind of the same as our.
It, it is longer, so compared to the other crosswind runway. So if you're, if you ask the pilots that are out there, the GA pilots that use the crosswind runway, uh, in the summertime, you know, right now, performance of aircraft, performance of your car as well is reduced because of high temperature and because of high humidity, and they call that density altitude. It's very difficult to get off the ground when you're in a little airplane on the existing crosswind runway. So it will be, it will allow more opportunity for the GA community to get in their aircraft and to fly safely. It's, you're not gonna be bringing in, you know, 737s and all that because of this runway. Not gonna happen. This is to serve the community that you have.
Essentially, essentially, this is a replacement. You do have the existing crosswind runway, it's just that crosswind runway doesn't meet design standards, nor does it actually accurately or more efficiently, you know. For the aircraft that need to use a crosswind runway during times when it is crosswinds up there, the smaller aircraft, they, they, like Jason said, they can't handle it. Some of the larger aircraft that are using your primary runway, you know, they don't have such an issue with the crosswind. So it's essentially for the smaller GAs, single-engine piston aircraft, that during times when the winds are high and they are blowing across that, that runway, you know, they can use it and take off. So it's not, it's not creating another runway for, you know, it's not increasing capacity. It's essentially replacing a existing crosswind runway that'll be used by the same users that use it today, just more safely and efficiently, essentially.
So the other one, is it the, the oldest, where is the crosswind? Is it the old 422? Is that, is that the old? Okay.
Yeah, okay, so essentially, oh, well, there, the other picture. So this is, this is crosswind runway 422, so this is the existing one today. This is your primary runway 725, which is what is in, in use the majority of the time. You know, the crosswind runway is usually either preferred just by some of the smaller aircraft, or when the winds are running, you know.
or when the winds are running, you know, across that main runway. So this, but this is, yeah, the?
It almost looks like when you look at the two now, with the one planned and the old one, did they just hang a windsock and just go, okay, this is because it's not even same.
Pretty much, yeah.
Or anything, so.
It's safe to say that it was probably constructed before the FAA and it had, you know, had design standards for runways, so.
Yeah, because when you're out there, when you're out there and you're flying around, landing on this runway, the crosswind, the primary runway direction doesn't line up with either runway right now. And it almost lines up directly with the proposed runway. So the people are gonna be happy about it. I'm gonna be happy because I fly here, so it's, it's gonna be good.
Well, that's good. If pilots pilots like it, that's for sure.
And you know what we did not mention? This is a, this is a planning study for getting more detail on the project. This does not mean the project is going to happen. FAA has to weigh in on it after the report is finished and submitted. They will weigh in on it and make a determination of whether or not they're gonna fund it. So we're talking like this is going to happen. That is not necessarily.
You gotta have faith.
That's right.
Jacob wants it so bad, so we don't have a choice. I bet it does. Well, thank you guys very much for spending the day in Cholo. You've been here all day pretty much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Alrighty, next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Consent calendar, well, we'll consider of a resolution number R twenty twenty-four nineteen, adopting annual policy. Consideration new agreement with White Mountain Mills on Wheels. Consideration new agreement with Cholo Historical Society. Consideration of a renewal with Cholo Main Street. Consideration of renewal agreement with Cholo Chamber. Consideration of non-commercial ground lease with the Flying Dentist LLC. Consideration non-commercial ground lease with Eglu Properties. Consideration of acceptance of the aquatic center door and window replacement. Consideration of acceptance of city campus training building windows. Consideration of approval, annual purchase orders. Consideration of adoption resolution number R twenty twenty-four twenty, design the chief fiscal officer for the city of Cholo. Consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council's special meeting on June fourth and the regular meeting on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any questions or comments or anybody want to poll? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as read. I got a motion by Councilman Adams. Need a second? I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of the Cholo Parks and Rec Advisory Committee member, Mrs. Paul.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Due to the resignation of Cholo Parks and Recreation Committee member and Van Winkle, the advisory committee has a vacancy which are marked. Staff contacted three applicants who applied for the Planning and Zoning Commission vacancy opening to gauge interest in applying for the position. Jody Whitehead, Kevin Kugler, and Mike Nagel all expressed their interest in being considered for the open position on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Attached is a ballot showing the names of the three applicants. Council members should mark one choice on the ballot for the individual they wish to appoint. And then after I receive those ballots and tally up the result and indicate the individual with the most most votes, a formal motion may be made based on the results. And then councils, council member votes will be reflected in the minutes.
Thank you.
Mayor, it looks like Mike Nagel, Nagel, has the most votes.
Mike Nagel?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept Mike Nagel on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee member. I got a motion by Vice Mayor, second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Welcome, Mike. How do you say his last name? Nagel?
I think it's Nagel.
We'll go with that, I guess. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of approval alternate essential air service application. Mr. Allen?
Heavy airport meeting here. Apologize for that. So the city of Cholo was granted eligibility under the essential air service program by the U.S. Department of Transportation Executive Order beginning in nineteen ninety-nine. The DOT administers the EAS contract, which provides a federal subsidy for airline services to rural areas. Cholo's current EAS contract is set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. On December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, the DOT issued order twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash thirteen requesting proposals from airlines interested in providing EAS with a due date of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The DOT received proposals from three air carriers, which were Boutique, Contour Airlines, and Southern Airways Express. On February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, the city council voted unanimously to recommend Contour Airlines as the preferred air carrier. The DOT responded to the recommendation letter by issuing a six-month extension to the current carrier. And the extension was issued to Southern Airways Express because the DOT had decided internally that Part Three Eighty Public Charter air carriers like Contour Airlines were not being selected under the traditional EAS program at this time. And staff was encouraged by the DOT to consider alternate essential air service or AEAS, which is an alternative to traditional EAS service that does not restrict Part Three Eighty carriers like Contour. AEAS is a grant program in which the city receives a carrier subsidy directly in the form of a grant annually. The carrier submits invoices to the city based on the flight services provided. Invoices from the carrier are to be paid by the city on a monthly basis. And staff will reconcile the monthly invoices and submit the flight information to the DOT along with a reimbursement request through the grant. By entering into an agreement with the air carrier directly through EA, AEAS, it allows more, for more control of the agree, of the agreement with the airline and provides more flexibility to select a new air carrier if that becomes necessary. Any EAS community can submit an AEAS application at any time. And if approved by DOT, Contour Airlines could begin services early as October first, twenty twenty-four. Upon the expiration of an AEAS contract, if not renewed, the community will automatically revert to its traditional EAS community status. And the DOT will issue a request for proposals to air carriers at that time. Staff recommends approving the application for essential air service, which would allow us to bring Contour, who operates a thirty-seat regional jet as opposed to what's currently operating a PC twelve, nine-seat, single-engine turboprop aircraft. And I'm available for any questions.
Is there any questions or comments? I guess I got a quick comment or question. Question, what's the difference of the two? I know we we probably know, but somebody looking, what's the difference of the AEAA service and the one we're using now?
So under traditional EAS, the the Department of Transportation puts out this request for proposals. And airlines submit their proposals to serve the community. And the city doesn't handle the money in any way. The DOT basically forms a contract with the carrier for a certain amount of time, so many flights per week to a certain destination. And and they, they submit their invoices basically directly to the DOT and the DOT pays. Under alternate EAS, we would, the city would basically handle the money through a grant. So and it allows us a lot more flexibility to be able to choose our carrier or to move away from a carrier if we wanted to. Under the DOT's contract, they get hired for two years. And if the service is bad for those two years, they just say, well, you know, you just wait until the next RFP comes out and and maybe another carrier will propose that you like better, but maybe not, you know, you you don't know. But under AEAS, the the contract is directly with, between the city and the airline, and it's funded through a grant. So it's, it's no money out of pocket for the city or the taxpayers or anyone like that. So it's essentially the same program. It's just a different way of handling the funds.
The flexibility is when I got out of that whole thing. So if we have a bad airlines and I don't know how many days or months we have to give them, but it it helps us a lot more instead of dealing with, like you just said, the two-year contract. And the first six months, we want them gone, and we don't have that flexibility.
Right. And under that, under the traditional EAS, you know, we, you know, the community can complain to the DOT and they say, you know, well, you know, they've been hired for this amount of time and you'll have another opportunity to make a recommendation, which is all we're given under the traditional EAS is an opportunity to recommend of the proposed airlines or the airlines that proposed on.
I guess that means if it doesn't work, we're gonna get more complaints. We're getting them anyway, but anyway. Any other questions or comments or motions?
I have a question. How come we haven't been doing this before? It gives us greater flexibility. Why are we waiting till now? Why didn't we do it ten, twelve years ago?
So it it didn't, because there wasn't a carrier like Contour that proposed at that time. So the AEAS, because Contour is a Part Three Eighty carrier, which is a public charter technically, which is no difference to the passengers. They're, they'd never noticed a difference, but it's a different flight, flight certificate that the operator operates under. So Contour submitted under traditional EAS and and council recommended unanimously to go with Contour. The issue, the reason that we're having to look at AEAS is because they can't be awarded under EAS anymore. They were previously doing that in the past, but they haven't. So we found ourselves in a situation where going EAS now would allow us a better carrier. But in the past, it wouldn't have made a difference on the carriers that proposed. So this is.
I'm saying if we could have, but we've been having bad carriers at least the previous three. So why didn't we take more control and the proactive approach, even if it wasn't the carriers who were submitting? If we were like, yeah, we're having terrible service because of the flights are being canceled or they're not being on time, why didn't we go this route years before? To have that control.
There is a fair amount of responsibility with handling the grant money and being being granted this this amount. And another, another benefit of going AEAS now, I mean, in the past, it was never, it it was never like a this or that. You go AEAS, you can get an airline like Contour. Under traditional EAS and everyone who proposed on previous years were all eligible under traditional EAS. So you just make your recommendation and and move forward with that recommendation. But now with this carrier that's in a different category, they don't qualify under traditional EAS or they, internally, the DOT made that decision, but.
I get all that. I'm just asking, why didn't we?
I mean, because it wasn't a necessity. There was no need, like, under this situation, Contour Airlines had never proposed for this community before. So it was not, it wasn't a necessity to get that carrier and we wouldn't have had to handle the money then. You know, with the, you know, so this grant for Contour would be a five million dollar per year grant for this application is for four years. And that would bring that that money in the community through the grant. But that's because they're a much more expensive carrier than the other two carriers that proposed. And that's one, another one of the reasons that we'd have to go AEAS this time. But I can't speak to why it never happened in the past, aside from that it was never a necessity, that we we received proposals, however many proposals we received, and then were able to get to make a recommendation. And there was no, no need to go AEAS with it. But I mean, it has been an option for years, but it's never been a a necessity to to acquire a certain airline or obtain airline service from a certain airline.
So having canceled flights and and having delayed flights and stuff like that and taking more of a proactive approach was never a necessity for us? And dealing with it more instead of allowing DOT to just kind of take our recommendation?
So that that's, it's never been considered that I know of to go AEAS until this point in time. But it wasn't a, obviously, no one's been thrilled with the service. But under Boutique, they they operated successfully for several years. And then the pandemic really caused an issue with with Boutique. And they started to suffer. And then the last proposal, the last go-around for a proposal was in twenty twenty-two, which was a December thing, and they do these two-year contracts. And the city was, you know, the the council recommended Southern at that time. And that was between two other carriers that weren't providing an equal level of service. So that's why the recommendation was made for Southern. But and Southern has operated successfully in a different aircraft type all over the country. And so their numbers that they presented to council were very good. And then, you know, obviously, we've been communicating with DOT as their service has been poor. We've, you know, communicate with DOT, say, you know, this isn't working for us, this isn't working for us, which is gonna allow us when we make this AEAS application, we've got all this history, say, hey, we've given every airline in this area of the country that that serves these EAS routes, we've given every single one of them an opportunity, and none of them have been successful. So now, as a, as a next resort, a last resort, we wanna move forward with the AEAS, which would allow a carrier like Contour to come through and serve our community. So I I think we're taking, I think this is a good move and I think that's the step that the city needs to take. And I'm glad we're, and we should take it now. The alternative is the DOT just offered a extension to Southern because they basically said, we're not going to select Contour under traditional EAS. So then our.
Could I just jump in for a second? So the airport has been under Public Works and under my purview for fifteen-ish years. And until about two months ago, Jake may have known about this, but personally, I had never heard of the AEAS. And that came from a recommendation from Department of Transportation and Contour Air. So I think to answer your question, we were just not aware that that there was an alternative program until a very short time ago.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So under this new program, do we have any chance of our funding being less than it would under the typical?
No, this will actually allow us, I mean, if if the DOT approves the application that that is before you today, then that would, Contour, like I said, was a much more expensive carrier. So under the the other contracts, you know, if they were choosing traditional EAS, they would choose, the the money factors in, and these smaller aircraft, turboprop aircraft, are much less expensive to operate. So the other subsidy under these other airlines would be like two point five million dollars a year roughly for both of those smaller airlines that proposed. And Contour is near, more than double that for the same type of. So under traditional EAS, they may, you know, want to factor in the cost a little bit more. But under this program, we say, this is the carrier that we want. This is how much they require. And they just give us a grant for that amount on an annual basis. And then it's invoice, we get invoice from the airline, we create an agreement with the airline and we're invoiced on a monthly basis for however many flights are flown. And if a flight isn't flown, and this is the same under traditional EAS, if a flight is not flown, they don't get the subsidy. So if they're operating at a fifty or sixty percent completion rate, then they're only getting fifty or or sixty percent of the subsidy. They they, so most airlines are working their hardest to try to keep the flights, you know, moving and on and on time and and to get that subsidy. But it's been, I mean, we're all aware of the of the struggles that the airline has had here. And and I think this is our best option moving forward. And it also gives the opportunity to the city, the opportunity to potentially surpass ten thousand enplanements. So this is a much larger aircraft. It would be twelve flights a week as opposed to eighteen flights a week. But there's a maximum, say, every flight every day for the for the year is full. Our maximum amount of enplanements that could be generated at the airport would be about seventeen thousand. Under the current carriers and the smaller aircraft, even with more flights, they can only do about seven thousand enplanements in a year if every flight is full every day. And the reason that's, that's. And the reason that's, that's a major difference is that our entitlement funds from the, from the FAA for airport improvement projects, the entitlement funds with less than ten thousand enplanements is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, and then with over ten thousand enplanements is one million dollars a year for entitlement funds that, that you can choose, they have to be AIP eligible projects, which is Airport Improvement Program projects, but it, basically, we just could qualify for a whole lot more funding under someone like Contour. So, that's another reason to, to, you know, go with AEAAS. And I also want to mention that I spoke with multiple other airport managers that are in the Phoenix, so they do a hub and spoke, Phoenix, Contour serves Vernal, Utah, they serve Moab, Utah, and they serve Page, Arizona. And I reached out to each of those airport managers there, and I asked them, how's Contour doing? You know, are they gonna be a good carrier for us? I mean, we've been through three carriers that didn't perform, and we, you know, we don't want to keep doing this. And they all had good things to say about Contour, and they said that, you know, the jet service changed everything for their community, and, and so, and, and basically, the, the only way that, that we can bring an airline like Contour here is to go with the AEAAS program from, is what DOT has basically said to us. So this is, this is, this is the only option for that.
Councilman Adams, did you have a question?
No.
Sounds like you get to Phoenix quicker.
Yes.
I'll move to send an application to the U.S. Department of Transportation to request alternative essential air service with Contour Airlines as the preferred essential air service carrier for the city of Cholo for a four-year term and authorize the mayor to sign associated documents.
Got a motion, I need a second. Councilman Hatch, second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Jacob.
You.
Good luck on getting that crosswind runway going.
Thank you, Jacob.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of adoption of resolution R 2024-22, approving intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation for sidewalk improvements and multi-use pathway along State Route 260. Hello, Mr. Hymasov.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. The city of Cholo requested and received one million, about eighty-six thousand dollars in FY24 transportation alternative, or TA, grant funding to construct a multi-use path along State Route 260 from the Pine Oaks subdivision to the intersection of State Route 260 in Fawnbrook. The scope of the project includes construction, a five-foot sidewalk and an eight-foot wide multi-use path approximately one point one miles along the west side of State Route 260. The project will include installation of retaining walls, ADA compliant sidewalk ramps, a right turn lane at Fawnbrook, and required drainage. Now, the total project cost is currently estimated about one million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, resulting in an estimated city of Cholo local match of about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. After the intergovernmental agreement is approved, the environmental clearance process can begin, and construction will be scheduled after those clearances are received. Staff recommends approving the resolution of number R 2024-22, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the multi-use path along State Route 260 from Pine Oaks to Fawnbrook and authorizing the mayor to sign said agreement. Do this, some exhibits attached, I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any questions or comment?
When will this project get started?
We don't have a date for construction yet. Unfortunately, this, now that we, we get through the IGA process, we'll do a kickoff with ADOT, and we have to go through the environmental clearances, rider clearances, utility clearances. Environmental clearance is the big one. It could take upwards of six months sometimes to get through those clearances, but we'll dive into that this summer, hopefully get things finalized by the end of the year, and hopefully we're hitting the ground running next year.
So this isn't funded for this year, it's funded for next year?
It's, it was currently awarded with this year's funding. Knowing that we have to get through the clearance process, we'll be looking to start construction later in the year, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number R 2024-22, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the multi-use path along SR 260 from Pine Oaks to Fawnbrook and authorizing the mayor to sign said agreement.
I have a second, Councilman Adams. All those in favor, say hi. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of appl- consideration of acceptance of scope revision professional service contract for Wolford Road reconstruction, City of Cholo, project number R 1424, Mr. Hymasov.
The city was awarded one million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in federal direct spending to reconstruct Wolford Road from East Whipple to State Route 260. Scope of work concludes removing the existing roadway section, installing a new stronger roadway section, replacing the pavement markings. Now, the roadway was constructed in two thousand with an anticipated of receiving much lower traffic volumes that we're seeing today. The Arizona Department of Transportation, or ADOT, is required to administer on the project as required by the federal funding. At the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, a professional services contract for the design of the Wolford Road reconstruction project was awarded to Ironside Engineering in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Project has been designed, environmental clearances have been obtained, and is currently out for bids. During the design phase of the project, ADOT's review staff made unanticipated requests and extensive review comments required additional time to complete the final design. These revisions and additional site testing that was required were not included in the initial scope of work for Ironside. Now, the total additional design work is twenty-five thousand dollars, resulting in a final design cost of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. The estimated total construction cost for the project is currently estimated at two point four million, and the revised design fee remains well under the normal ten percent of construction costs for similar work. After the project advertises and during construction, ADOT requires that the design engineer be under contract and be available to answer questions about the design plan, specifications, as well as provide the final ASB bill and record drawings when construction is complete. This is called post-design services. ADOT has agreed that the city of Cholo can directly contract with the design engineer to save money and have greater control over the cost during the post-design phase because this is a local roadway. Ironside Engineering has developed a proposal based on typical post-design services for federally funded project for a total cost of not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. This work will be constructed, conducted at a time and materials cost as needed, not to exceed that eighteen thousand dollars. The expectation is that the true cost of the post-design services will be less than this amount. Staff recommends approving the scope revision to the professional services contract for the design of Wolford Road reconstruction project, City of Cholo, R 1424, to Ironside Engineering and Surveying Incorporated in an amount not to exceed that total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. The design cost memo and the extra scope is attached, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Motions? Councilman Jack.
I move to approve the scope revision of the professional services contract for the Wolford Road reconstruction project.
Got a motion, I need a second. Councilman Adams, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of scope revision to Reedhead House Architectural Service Professional Service Contract, City of Cholo, project number, change pages here, FM 5823, Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The Reedhead House, constructed in nineteen twelve, is the last standing residential structure of this period in Cholo. It's an original homestead built by the Reedhead family, one of the city's founders, and is continuously occupied until the city acquired it in October, twenty twenty-one. The home was acquired to preserve this historic, this historic home and its unique characteristics for future generations. Upon completion of the renovation, the home will be open for public tours facilitated by the Cholo Museum. Repairs have been made to the foundation, measures have also been taken to protect the foundation from water infiltration, which includes replacing the rain gutters and rerouting flood irrigation away from the building. City has applied for and received grant funding to start the process of restoring the building. To this end, the city prepared a request for qualifications and selected Motley Design Group LLC to develop a historic building preservation plan and assess the structure to determine eligibility for nomination to the National Register. Motley has prepared a building condition assessment. The report included three categories of improvement, critical, serious, and minor. Staff presented the, the report with the architect's recommendations to the city council at a study session on March fifth, twenty twenty-four. The council directed staff to move forward with the critical priority work items. This work includes repairing cracks in the adobe walls, foundations, and brick wall. The work also includes repairing plaster, adjusting door and window frames, reinstalling the pine plank floors, reinstalling plumbing and wiring to code. These items have an estimated construction cost of about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The architect's original scope of work was based on a much smaller construction budget to complete the, the critical work, staff requested an expanded scope to complete the recommended work. The architect's expanded scope includes preferring construction plans, bidding, and construction administration. The expanded scope will, will increase the original project cost by twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars for a total of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Staff recommends approving the scope revisions to Motley Design Group LLC for professional services contract for the Reedhead Historical Architectural Services, City of Cholo, project FM 5823, authorizing an additional amount not to exceed twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars with a total, for a total fee of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we, can we get grants for something like that, or what is the deal?
Yes, we, we did receive grants. I don't know what the exact amount of it, I want to say it was, what, eighty-six thousand? And then also, in the twenty twenty-five budget, I believe that council is also going to approve some fund, some additional funding for that. You haven't approved that yet, that's gonna happen later.
Right, that's later tonight, hopefully. Okay. Questions or comments? Councilman Adams.
I just can make a motion.
Absolutely.
I move to approve the scope, scope revision to Motley Design Group LLC professional service contract for the Reedhead House, historical ar-
Easy for you to say.
Architectural Services, City of Cholo, project number FM 5823, authorizing additional funds not to exceed twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and for, for a total fee, total fee of seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Are you gonna blame that on Cholo High School like I do? Okay. I have a motion, I got a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. That was a long motion.
That was long. Elsewhere I can say the right word.
That dang high school.
Dang.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of acceptance of eight pickleball courts and associated improvements, City of Cholo, project number FM dash zero four twenty-three. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. At its regular meeting on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the city council approved resolutions authorizing the city to accept a total of five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in grant funding from Arizona State Parks Land and Water Conservation Fund and Arizona State Parks Heritage Fund to construct eight pickleball courts and associated improvements. The grant funds became available in September, twenty twenty-three. The city council also approved up to three hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred dollars in matching funds. The twenty-three, twenty-four budget included eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred dollars for the project. At its regular meeting on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, Cholo City Council awarded Hellis Construction a construction contract to build eight pickleball courts and associated improvements for an amount not to exceed eight, exceed eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. The improvements included site work, sidewalks, remadas, drainage, fencing, wind screens, post-tension concrete slab court surfacing, and striping light bases and conduit for future court lighting, and also some seating. During construction, there was an issue with the specification for the two remadas. The original installed remadas were the wrong height. This was due to an error in the specification that the contractor and city staff missed. Staff negotiated with the contractor and agreed to split the additional cost, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, thirty-two cents. This resulted in an additional seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, sixteen cents to the city. The eight pickleball courts and associated improvements have been completed with a final project cost of eight hundred and sixty-two, six hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents. Staff recommends accepting the eight pickleball courts and assorted, associated improvements, City of Cholo, project number FM zero four twenty-three, approving the seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollar, sixteen cent change order with final cost of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars, sixteen cents, releasing the retainage, initiating the warranty period, and approving the associated budget transfers. Happy to answer questions.
You can blame that on Councilman Adams, he led you into that. So how long is the, the warranty period on that?
It varies, so-
Is it different-
So elements that have more warranty than others, and also, there was, when they poured the first court, they didn't, our inspectors weren't on-site to watch the first part of that pour, and so, we told the contractor that they were going to have to extend the warranty on that or redo it. So instead of a two-year, they, we got a five-year on that court.
I'm glad you said that, because I remember the beginning of that. Are questions or comments? You want to try another one?
His motion.
Councilman Jack, he said, no, I'm not gonna try it again.
Move to accept eight pickleball courts and associated improvements, City of Cholo, project number FM zero four two three, approve the seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents change order with a final cost of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars and sixteen cents, release the retainage, initiate the two-year warranty period, and approve the associated budget transfers.
That's the part I want to question.
Okay, so in the, the motion, I think it probably should just read the warranty period because there's variable warranties on that.
Can we go again?
Yes, please.
Just amend it to say to variable warranty period. Can I just add that? With a variable warranty period.
Thank you. Got a motion, need a second? Got a second by Councilman Whipple. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cup. You're not done yet. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of purchase of lights, poles, and material for the new city campus pickleball court, City of Cholo, project FM ninety-three twenty-four. Mr. Cup.
Thank you. The city recently completed, and even more recently approved, the construction of eight new pickleball courts located at city campus. The work included the installation of light pole bases and conduits for future installation of court lighting. The light poles and wire were not included in the original project scope because State Parks Grant did not cover these items. Due to the high level of interest and use of these courts, staff has been directed to move forward with the installation of sixteen light poles. The new lights will match those installed at the original four courts. There is a single source for these light poles through a sole distributor. The project will also include purchasing wire and other required parts and equipment. The city's public works staff will install the lights. In order to receive the poles as quickly as possible, staff recommends using city council contingency funds for the purchase. This will allow the staff to place the order prior to beginning of the next fiscal year in July. Staff recommends approving the purchase of light poles and materials for the new city campus pickleball court, City of Cholo, project FM ninety-three twenty-four, in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars, and approving the associated budget transfers.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
No, let's make a recommendation.
Mayor, any question?
I'm sorry.
Are, are these gonna be on timers, or are they, is there a certain time that they're gonna-
They'll be on timers, I think they shut off at ten, but we can shut them off any time we want.
Is it similar, is it similar to the, the current ones you have on there? You flip them on, but they'll automatically shut off at a certain time. They don't have the, the turn where you put them on for an hour.
You know, honestly, I really don't know how, it sounds like you've, you've worked them, it's gonna be on the same type of timer as the, what we've got in there.
Yeah, they just turn on and then they'll all shut off at midnight or whatever.
Cool. Any other questions or comments? Or motions?
Move to approve the purchase of light poles and materials for the new city campus pickleball courts, City of Cholo, project number- uh, City of Sholo Project Number FM nine three two four in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars and approve the associated budget transfer.
Got a motion? Need a second? A second, Councilman Judd. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. You know what? We go through all those projects, and I I keep thinking about how wonderful our staff is by going after grants for a lot of this stuff. You know, we we talk about all this money and, you know, how quick it goes through, but realizing how hard you guys work on getting grants for all this stuff. So it's it's absolutely amazing. And I know our grant writers probably can work fourteen twenty-hour days or or I mean, they're busy either than you can imagine, but I appreciate them going after a lot of these grants that are out there that especially the park ones. I mean, there's a lot out there that we don't we know about that we go after. So I I just I appreciate you guys doing that and and and, uh, it's nice to get these projects done, but it's also nice to save our taxpayers' money and and put them somewhere else. So thank you, Bill. Appreciate you.
And Lisa and Shannon really get all the credit for finding the money, so.
Right. They're amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, next item on the agenda, consideration of interconnection agreement with Arizona Water, city attorney.
Thank you. Historically, there's been a verbal agreement between Arizona Water Company and Pineview Water Company to provide water for the Sholo Lake Campground. The Sholo Lake Campground is within the Arizona Water Company's service area or within the company's certificate of convenience and necessity. In twenty-ten, the city purchased Pineview Water Company and continued with the verbal water agreement. The interconnection agreement that's before council today memorializes the verbal agreement whereby the city will continue to own and maintain the interconnection and facilities before the interconnection, and Arizona Water Company will continue to own and maintain the facilities after the connection. The city will deliver and bill water to the Arizona Water Company for a one-inch meter at the same rate as within the city limits. Arizona Water Company will then provide water to the Sholo Lake Campground Campground and bill the vendors at the Sholo Lake Campground. Staff recommends approving the interconnection agreement with Arizona Water Company, and Mr. Petrick with Arizona Water is present as well.
Appreciate that. Any questions or comments? You know, you say verbal agreement, but probably it was a handshake, and now it's time to clean things up. The handshakes, we like to work every now and then, but get this legal thing. So nothing's changing. It just makes it legal, is my understanding correct?
Correct. It's just putting what has been going on for some time in writing.
Appreciate that. Appreciate Arizona Water probably bring this to us and say, okay, handshakes are over. Let's let's take care of this. I appreciate that. Questions or comments or motions? Councilman Whipple?
I move to approve the interconnection agreement with Arizona Water Company.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you for for coming. Appreciate that. We'll do a handshake on something else later or something. Alrighty, next item on the agenda will be a public hearing regarding final budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and proposed secondary property tax levy consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-four twenty-one, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Uh, tonight, we have a final budget presentation, and after the presentation, we'll have a public hearing. Brant's smiling up here, right? I'm just curious what he's gonna ask me.
That's right. Oh, I'm gonna roll.
Got a whole list over here.
So just a recap of our our transparent process with our budget, uh, with the council study session back in January, couple of town halls, a draft tentative budget review, which was basically changes to what the city manager initially recommended. And then the council adopted the tentative budget at the last meeting on June fourth. And tonight, we have the final budget adoption, and we'll get into the details, but just for information purposes, we have not made any changes to the tentative. Uh, once you do adopt adopt the tentative, you can't do any increases. You can decrease it at that time. And then next, uh, at our next meeting, which is on July sixteenth, we'll adopt the a request for the council to adopt the secondary tax rate for the streetlight improvement district. Just a reminder of the goals and priorities that the staff at council keep in mind as we go through the budget process. Uh, this chart shows our adopted budget versus what we've actually expended for the last five years, going back to twenty twenty. Uh, we always are conservative in our budgeting and try to underspend, uh, the budget. Some of that's due to carryover. Some of it's, uh, doing due to projects coming in under budget. Um, and you'll notice that the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five is less than our estimated for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, our final budget number. Uh, the reason for that decrease is we had a couple of bond issues that we did that took us a couple of years to complete uh, for one for roads and one for sewer, and that's what, uh, the bulk of the reason why our budget's less than, uh, the prior year. This is a breakdown of the revenues, uh, our operating revenues, which is revenues coming in from operations for the current year as projected for fiscal year twenty-five is about fifty-four percent. And then our beginning fund balance is thirty-five percent. So that's the bulk of the revenue that will be used for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Uh, this is a breakdown of the operating revenues, uh, close to eighty million dollars. There's some intergovernmental, about forty percent. Local taxes, twenty percent. State share revenues, nine point two. Uh, utility fees, seventeen point two, and charges for services, about seven point five percent. And this is a breakdown of the expenditures by type. Capital is the bulk of it, fifty-seven percent. Now, seventeen point four percent, and then operations, uh, close to sixteen percent. And this is a breakdown of the general fund of where the expenditures are at. A lot of information on this slide, but the general operations is about twenty-three million of this, uh, amount here. This is a breakdown of our personnel by service area. A hundred and eighty-eight point six full-time equivalent employees, uh, across the city in the different departments. Public safety, thirty-five percent. Utilities, public works, and, uh, make up about low over thirty percent. Community services, fifteen percent, general government, eleven point nine percent, and then planning and zoning at three point seven percent. As we saw earlier in the slide, about fifty-four percent of or fifty-seven percent of the budget is for capital. And this is a breakdown of the capital as far as the departments go. In general operations, we have a significant amount for the community and event center or sports and event center. And then in streets and engineering, Scott Rantrell project is about twenty-seven million of that thirty-five million. So those are two larger components that I would like to point out. Everything else is pretty standard for a normal year with the budget. This is a further breakdown of expenditures by our service area. Public Works, forty-six point two four percent. That's the largest. General Government, twenty-three point three. Public Safety, ten point two, and Utilities at fifteen point three. So another component of the public hearing is the streetlight improvement district. So just want to talk about that briefly. The property tax levy budget is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, that's the same as what it was in twenty twenty-four. The citywide levy pays for utility costs associated with street and park lights. And we do budget a general fund subsidy just as a backup in case we have increases in rates or unexpected charges with our monthly rates. And the tax rate, which will stay the same as it's been for four or five years now, at, uh, point one four zero one per one hundred dollars of assessed value and approximately seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents on a home of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that would be the annual amount. So we have the public hearing next, and then, uh, the secondary property tax levy will be brought before the council on July sixteenth. That's the presentation I have tonight, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions or comments? At this time, I'll open this up to a public hearing. Anybody wants to make any comments or questions? You three aren't sprinting up here, so I guess we'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the council for questions, comments, or motions.
I'll just, uh, make a motion. We also make a comment. I want to thank Justin and Carrie both for working diligently on this. I want to thank our city manager as well. I know Morgan's done a phenomenal job as far as meeting with all the department heads and individual employees, and I know that that takes up the bulk of your, you know, uh, late winter, early spring. So, um, I I want to publicly thank all three of you for for coming up with a with a budget. You know, we we throw this term around, this fiscally conservative budget, right? And I think sometimes that, uh, the word conservative is very politicized. Um, and and so I don't think that the the term that we use is is the national politicized one is that when we say that we're doing a fiscally conservative budget, we want to make sure that we're spending our we we take we're very cognizant of the dollars that we're receiving, because we know who our citizens are, the money that that it takes to fund this. We know that they're coming from tax dollars, and we want to be very cognizant of where those tax dollars go. So, um, I I feel like serving on this council with all the current members that um, that's a very strong priority for us, and that, uh, the work that the three of you have done on this um, represents the the feeling and the direction that we as a council have given you. And, um, I just want to thank you for all of the work and the dedication that that it's taken to to go to this final. You know, the the motion itself is one paragraph or one sentence, but the time and energy and the effort is countless hours that, uh, that you've worked very diligent diligently. And so I want to thank you for that, Justin, and from Morgan, and please pass that on to Carrie and 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 the rest of your team, Justin.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six million four hundred eighty-four, uh, five hundred twenty-six dollars and zero cents.
Got a motion second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. He read that pretty well. Did you see how fast?
Yeah, Sholo High School.
Sholo High School? You paid attention. Alright, next item on the agenda. Um, at this time, the city council recessed in a special meeting of the Sholo Bluff Community Facility District Board to adopt the final budget fiscal year twenty twenty-four twenty-five for the district. Ms. Drew Jones. Let me find it. Okay, at this time, I'll call this meeting to order, also that all members are present. And first item on the agenda, the public hearing of consideration resolution number R twenty twenty-four O two, adopting the final budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Council.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for the Sholo Bluff Community Facilities District. Uh, tonight, we have before the board, uh, the final fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, a hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. We'll go through some quick information, back history for the CFD. The special district was formed by the property owners in two thousand and five. It's a separate unit of government from the City of Sholo. Any debt issued must be covered by the district's assessed value, and the benefit of the debt, which in this case was primarily for infrastructure, must be for the district. There were two separate funds, special assessment bond and a general obligation bond. The GO bond was paid off in July of twenty eighteen. Uh, regarding the special assessment bond, it was issued for two million and fourteen thousand dollars in two thousand and seven. The annual debt service is a hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars, a total of two hundred and twenty-seven parcels, and the developer owns approximately fifty-two percent. We currently have an unbudgeted reserve of two hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, the revenues are beginning fund balances, two hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars, and we have an annual assessment billing of a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars with two billings in June, principal and interest, and in December, interest only. Our final budget number is a hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Or motions? Councilman Clark?
I'll move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash zero two, adopting the final budget in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and no sense.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor of the motion? Motion passed unanimously.
I think we need to do a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's the public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to a public hearing. Nobody's running up here. I'll close the public hearing and do the motion. Same motion, same second. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is a special meeting, or a motion to approve the special meeting on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Got a motion. Got a second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. We did need an approval of that, right? Okay. Guys, you all stare start staring at me when I when I get in trouble here, so I want to make sure. Okay, at this time, I'll recess back into our regular meeting, council meeting, and when I get back to it, if I get back to it. There it is, right there. Okay, next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Council members have any? Councilman Adams?
I just want to thank staff for all their hard work and, um, what they do to recognize our youth at Sholo High School and and other activities. Uh, it's a lot, a lot, a lot of work that they do, and I want to thank them.
I agree with that. Um, this last weekend, I attended the BMX races out at, um, our BMX track, and it was amazing. Uh, we had so many people there, so many participants. Um, and our staff set everything up so nicely and the parks maintenance crew, and I can tell you, I've I've gone around the state this last year following my grandson doing BMX racing. And that is is this is the nicest track in the entire state, and that, uh, the races were ran better than any place I've seen. They had it set up for camping and other activities there on the grass that, um, our crew takes care of. And the number of comments that I received from those participants and those coming from San Diego, New Mexico, uh, you know, it wasn't just a state event. It was a gold cup event, and so there was hundreds of participants. And, um, it really made me proud of our staff and made me proud of our community and the way we it was handled.
I wasn't there, but I I I friends with the bags, and so I, over four hundred races, I think I heard, and it's just the third, I think it was the third biggest race in Arizona. So it's pretty amazing. I I seen some pictures, and it's absolutely amazing what they do, and can't thank the bag family enough and city staff. They they started working on that track for this race probably about three weeks ago, and he pulls weeds. They they get their whole family out there, so it's pretty awesome. Any other? Councilman Judd?
Um, I just want to say thank you. Uh, I think it was June fourteenth. We had Flag Day, and I just love seeing all the the flags that are are put out. I think the American Legion does that. And, um, I I'm just grateful to live in a community that we celebrate America and and celebrate the flag, and appreciate everyone that that helped with that.
Yeah, um, I just would like to thank, um, there's a couple of things that, uh, I I want to bring up. The first one is we're still, um, in, uh, fire danger. Uh, I I had the opportunity recently to drive to Phoenix, and I noticed several, um, mopped out, uh, burn areas that, uh, trailers and, um, you know, people carelessly, uh, driving between Rye and and, uh, Fort McDowell Casino there. There was probably four or five there that had have sprung up over the last few weeks and stuff like that. And so the desert right now is very, very dry, and our forests are very, very dry. And so I believe we're going into stage-two fire restrictions here in the near future. Um, and then one of the things I wanted to to, you know, not to to completely be negative, but, uh, to thank, I was up at, uh, Maverick the other day getting one of my, uh, a drink there that you guys also famously like to give me a hard time for drinking some soda. Um, but the great thing was, was on all of their, um, their televisions, they had PSAs, and they had, you know, this western one where the guy was in an old cowboy hat, and he was shooting, and it was kind of talking about the the need to make sure that when you where you're shooting, you know where you're shooting and not creating sparks, and, uh, then they also- And then they also had another one where some cowboys were driving with a a trailer, and the the chain was 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 kicking off sparks. And so I thought it was really cool that not only do our city staff and and Timber Mesa Fire, but also businesses who who promote recreation, they were recognizing the need to make sure that we're smart and safe and that if you are going out into our forests, that you make sure that you do it in a very precautionary way so that we have those forests to be able to utilize for generations to come. So I just want to thank Maverick for doing that and thank all the the citizens for, you know, when you get up here, make sure that you're very mindful of of the fire restrictions and how dry our forests are at this time. And again, echo that hopefully we get rain here in the near future.
Hopefully, hopefully. Anybody else? Just a, just a couple of things. Obviously, there's events going on every weekend in Sholo. It's getting busier and busier. Last weekend, I couldn't even imagine with the bike races because I know a lot of those people liked our setup there because they get to stay there. They had some vendors out there. If you've never been to the races out there at Thunder Raceway this year, I would encourage you to go. The promoter out there is doing an amazing job. Races go, I I think usually till ten-thirty, eleven, but they're continuous. They keep going, they keep going. He started something that is, he's just an amazing man. He's been in here a few times, but Friday, he started a happy hour entrance for general admission. It's ten dollars from five to six, and I thought that was pretty cool. He's also, this Friday, he has, Blue Ridge High School football team is getting in free. And and Saturday, I believe Saturday or next Friday, Sholo does the same. But I thought, how brilliant is that? You know, you invite the football team, they're going to sell their cards there, they get to meet some of the drivers, but who are they going to bring? They're going to bring their parents. So he invited them for free, free entrance, and now they're going to bring their parents. So he's always thinking ahead of the game. So he's doing that with Sholo High School, too. I believe it might be this Saturday, it could be next Friday. Friday is kind of their slower day. So if you get a chance for ten dollars from five to six, get you in the front gate and go watch these races. There, there's some really good races. He's got a, he he runs three different tracks, so he's got kind of a circuit going. So I believe this weekend, there's going to be over sixty cars. He said maybe up to seventy-five cars this weekend with the, I think, the dwarfs and maybe the mini sprints. So if you you get a chance, I I would encourage you to go out, watch these races. I know there's other things going on in town, the markets, and I know there's plenty to do. But I I would just say with this happy hour price, if you ever wanted to go to a race for ten bucks, go for it. Friday only. Anyway, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as Councilman Clark said, we we're going to go into stage-two fire restrictions this Friday at eight AM. We've been in stage one, and we're going to send out a flyer that has the information about what's prohibited during stage two, so everybody's clear. That'll be on social media and on our website. The the voting group for the 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 fire group that meets every week voted on Monday to go into stage two. We're just really dry, lots of wind, and so been in red flag warnings several times this week. So that's the next step, is we're going to go into stage two. And as the mayor said, we got farmer's market going every Saturday during the summer. That's our festival marketplace from ten to three. And then this is our last council meeting before the Fourth of July. I'll just go over the Fourth of July activities real quick. So on Thursday, July fourth, we're going to begin with our parade at nine AM along the Deuce of Clubs. Then we'll have our wet zone take place immediately following the parade at Frontier Fields. And then at three PM, the gates open at the Sholo High School with our Freedom Fest, music, food vendors, and kids' activities. And then we'll have our fireworks display beginning at nine PM, roughly that night. And there will be information about the traffic detours and the events on our website. We'll remind everyone this year, the high school just put in a brand-new football field. And in order to give that field the opportunity to to take root and grow and and be good field for the season, we're not going to be on the field this year for our Fourth of July on the main football field. We're going to be on the side fields, some of the other fields around there. There'll still be plenty of room to accommodate people, but that is a bit of a change, and I know people don't like change. So we're just trying to get the word out that it's, we're not going to allow people on the football field this year just to, so that the kids, when they start their season, will have a good field. And just hopefully, you guys will spread the word and let people know that still at the high school, but not on the football field. And of course, we're still taking the applications for the Fourth of July parade. Take those almost all the way up until right before the Fourth of July. So thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. You know, I, if people ask about stage one, stage two, there's a huge difference stage two, obviously. But if you see something out there, I I think smoking's one of the number ones. You see people flicking out cigarettes out their window. Take that license plate down. I mean, don't be afraid because you'd be the person that said, I wish I'd have called that guy in. So don't be afraid to call in anything you see, somebody dragging a chain, jump in front of them and slow them down, something. Because we don't want to be them people that said, I should have, could have, would have, especially in our community. So I like the idea of some of the stores in our community, when we hit stage two, they quit selling firewood, even though they might be passing through. We don't, we don't care. So I know we have a lot of the big stores in our community that will stop selling firewood and stuff. And I've already got my pallet full of charcoal, so I'm good. No, I'm joking. But anyway, thank you. Appreciate it. Schedule a meeting.
Oh, no meetings, Mayor. Just a reminder, though, that we don't meet until July sixteenth, so we don't meet the week of July fourth.
All right. There's no more business before this council. I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.